Two townhomes.
Who's that? I can sit in that seat.
Good morning, your call is meeting door Lebanon County Commissioners. Would you all please rise to join me this time? Oh, let's play the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eliza, I was a little bit out of order. We normally start in a moment of silence. So if you might, please join me, a moment of silence right now. Thank you. When would that silence with any public comment that we have this morning, any public comment? Dan, would you please step up and introduce yourself for the record? Do you step up so we can all hear?
To here or?
Man, that's fine, wherever you go.
So I am here on behalf of my family today. We are the owners at the northeast and southeast corners of the intersection at Thompson Avenue and Hill Church in North Anvil Township. And we have great concern over the proposed construction project that is supposed to happen at that intersection. We think that it is going to cause an increase of speed and create dangerous conditions along the remainder of the road. About a year ago, I went ahead and probably over a year ago now, I went to the township meeting and I spoke to the supervisors and I asked for any information that they could give me about this construction project. And they said they had none. They had no information and it was all in PennDOT's hands. And then recently, we went ahead and we saw the proposal and we were pretty shocked that so much time and money has already been invested into a proposal that they knew so little about. And we've gone ahead and we've reached out to PennDOT and we've had conversations with them. And through those conversations, it's been pretty evident that they would have done what the township supervisors asked them to do. They would have gone ahead and tried a four-way stop. They would have tried red flashing lights. They would have tried rubble strips if they heard that that was what the community wanted. Wouldn't it make the most sense to go ahead and try something with the least economic and geographical impact first? And if that didn't work, then progress from there. The current proposal is going to potentially raise the road so high and change the grade so much that simply entering our field from the road is going to prove to be a great, great feat. And now it's being spoken and mentioned that they are thinking about shifting the current proposal southward to create less of an impact on the preserved farmland in the area. And if that shift happens, our land will take the brunt of the impact and it will be moved closer to our buildings. It'll be moved closer to our house, the residence that people live in. And it'll be moved to closer to our farm buildings that we use each day. And if you take a road that's already fast and move it closer, that's when it's going to be proposed to possibly have an increased speed and you're going to move it closer to our buildings, be, are worried. We're really concerned that's going to have a great hazard toward our family. So we contacted Senator Gabbard's office and we expressed our concerns and they heard them and they understood. And they were surprised actually because they had only recently heard of this proposal. They suggested that we went ahead and speak to our supervisors about it. So we went back to our supervisors and we told them how worried we are that this road with increased speed is going to be moved closer to our buildings, possibly. And they went ahead and told us that they were hoping that we hadn't heard about that. They were hoping that, that it was going to be kept quiet. Okay, and to me, that is really blatant lack of transparency. And the project seems to, the, the project at this intersection, the whole process seems to have been highly erroneously conducted. The property owners hadn't been reached out to, to gain any insight or any input. And if they had been, it would have been known that one of the owners of the northwest corner is willing to sell. And if they are willing to sell, preserved farmland shouldn't be touched and our farmland should be very minimally impacted. And I understand that at this point, a lot of money and time has already been invested in the current proposal. However, this is something that's going to impact our community and impact our family permanently. So to just push a plan through for the ease of it really shouldn't happen. And I understand that you don't have much control over this. But if you have any way to make our voices heard or help, we hope that you do so. Okay, and I really do appreciate the time that you've given me and the, you know. You heard me. Thank you, thank you.
Ms., I'm sorry, can you repeat your name, please?
Becky Stroll.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Becky. And my name is Amy Stevenson. I'm here to speak on behalf of my family and we own the other farm that is at, it's the residence 3901 Hill Church Road. And it is the other farm that is beside Becky's farm that is being affected by the proposed plan by PennDOT. So I just wrote a statement about farmland preservation that I wanted to read. So 20 years ago, we fought to have our farm preserved by the Farmland Preservation Board. Farmland preservation is intended to preserve the land and also to help fight progress and change. We are currently in a phase of progress and change in Lebanon County with much of that being inevitable and necessary. However, we question if the proposed project to Hill Church Road is the best option and if there may be a better plan that doesn't affect our land. We feel as though we preserved our land for this very moment right here. PennDOT formed the plan that included our land. And after realizing it was preserved, they informed the public that if the land would be taken by eminent domain. PennDOT and anyone who kind of allows this plan to pass through without any question or debate are devaluing our land preservation policies. And as being implied, the farmland preservation does not hold weight and importance. And we are here to say that we believe it does. Please take into consideration the farmland rights that we fought so hard to secure. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm her dad. I'm Jim Hoffman. And my wife and I are currently the owners of our family farm, Albron Farms. It's been in our family since 1732. My son and I farmed there. We're the ninth and 10th generation to farm there. In 2006, okay, we did preserve nearly 400 acres, which was a great thing for us. I am surprised, okay, at the, at the way things are progressing here. And I've always been involved in the community. My whole life, I was a firefighter who had, who would park the hay bale or yell to his wife at the other end of the dairy barn, "Hey, I gotta go take a fire call." And I did this all my life. I'm, I'm, I'm involved in a church that started there in 1732, the same time the family farms were started, Hill Church. And I've been on the cemetery board for 35 years and secured funding that maybe will allow that cemetery, which is the oldest cemetery in Lebanon County. Actually, these places are, were actually started in Lancaster County long before Lebanon County was actually started. And so I, I, I would say I care enough to be informed. And we were surprised, we got a letter from PennDOT and the letter said, "We may have to enter your land for a traffic study or a project that's coming up." And that's the last we heard till we heard, read the Levtown article that showed just what the magnitude of this project was. For me, I don't, and I know it isn't you, but I, when I think about the supervisors and I think about the PennDOT representatives, I lost all trust immediately with that. I don't think that is the way you do business. I, I, I used an example. I remember when PennDOT would trim the trees in front of our farm on Hill Church Road. Someone would meet from you, with you six months in advance and talk to you and things like that. And the way this was handled was preposterous. When we looked at this, and I just wanted to share, what happens is, and everyone, about 56 people met with us. And you look at this and the PennDOT Section 8 thing and you say, "There is that digital map and there's the farm and there's that." And even Dan Boz said, "You know, when I look at this map, I don't see your farm as being impacted really that much in this land, you know? Should you be concerned?" But I'm going to show you this picture and anybody that walk, comes out there and goes there, this is heading on Hill Church Road. Now, this land up here is where the intersection requirement is, is, is needed. And this is my neighbor's land. This is my land. Okay, this is preserved farmland. And, and you know, we're, we're really concerned. You know, and, and no one that looks at this just can envision how that land, how that preserved farmland is needed to make an intersection alignment up here. We, and, and we ran into something else too. And I believe Becky, my neighbor, tou, touched on it. What really makes this a, a ruination to our farm is they're going to raise the roadway from here to here 10 and a half feet high. Okay, so obviously, it isn't something like, well, you can get that bale or out, you know, and just drive beside the road, 10 and a half feet. It's going to create a huge problem with water. The water runoff there, they said, PennDOT tells us, would go through two pipes. Now, obviously, it is a lot of water. If we would put that through those two pipes, they say that could cause another three acres of land to be impacted because it's going to take stormwater management, swales and things like that. And it would turn out to be a huge loss, a loss that we don't know. PennDOT, it really hasn't been, they, when they met with us, they said, "We're going to come in up there about that telephone pole, maybe right about that bluff, come around here, come in there." We expected more than that. And that is, the impact is huge for that farm there. And again, it is preserved farmland. And you know, our thought that we'd like to share with you, just kind of bring you up to speed is, we sure are concerned about the intersection. We know it's a dangerous intersection and we know something needs to be done. But so many people have realized, this preserved farmland does not need to go in this project. The problem could be corrected a lot closer to the intersection. So, thank you for hearing us. And again, we are, we were told, we're told by everybody, when PennDOT's involved, you can't do anything. So everybody we told that, said that so far. And I'm sure you're thinking the same thought. But we, we, we do appreciate you letting us come in here and, and, and share this with you. Thank you.
I have two questions. Where is the intersection at?
Excuse me, you, you have questions, maybe you could do that later at, at the meeting.
I thought you were splitting up.
Any additional public comment at this time? Ma'am?
Yes. And no, I'm not a farmer, but I value our farmers. What I've noticed in Lebanon County and surrounding counties is once farmland is gone, it never comes back. I've seen industrial land made into residential land. I've seen residential land made into commercial and industrial land. I have never seen agricultural land, if from industrial, commercial or residential, ever turned back into agricultural land. We need to preserve it, not at all costs, but the cost is too high because we don't have enough farms left in Lebanon County. And personally, I don't know about the rest of you, but I like to eat. And I like to eat locally produced foods. Because getting them from elsewhere is inefficient and very expensive. And it doesn't promote goodwill in the county. If you're buying your local products, everybody benefits. The farmers get their living and I get to eat. So please consider this because when any little bit of agricultural land is taken, for whatever reason, it's gone forever. It's like extinction that way. It doesn't come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
I have another question. My second question. Doesn't preserved mean reserved, as in you can't touch it?
And you're sort of preaching to the choir, appreciate your concern, the concerns of these folks, but I, I don't think you're going to find that the county commissioners, long before I sat this chair, have been supportive of preserving farmland and put resources together to do that, exactly that. So I'm not sure what more we can do. Like I said, this, this matter is sort of out of our hands. It's more of a municipal, excuse me, township. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say, I do value farmland and I do support your efforts. It surprises me too that you would not know more about the project and it got this far. I'm disappointed that there isn't more transparency. That was out of our hands. I have empathy for you. And one of my other concerns is our farmland preservation list was almost to the end. Then we had a number of people sign back up. And now I'm afraid that might discourage other people from signing up if they see that this preserved farm is, you know, in, impacted with the land. So that is scary, both what you're experiencing and how it may impact other farmers who would, were looking to preserve their land. So I would suggest that maybe we could provide a letter of support for them. And if they're go, take it to Harrisburg, to the PennDOT, they can show that the, not just, I don't know, that all these people could go up at the same time, but if they had a letter of support from us that the community supports farmland preservation, that might be something that would be helpful. So I would make a motion to do a, a letter of support.
I'm inclined to do, this is a township issue that I wouldn't mind communicating with the township are concerned, but I, you know. It's the township and it's PennDOT.
If you would like to draft a letter of support and propose that in the future, maybe so, so we can know exactly what you're talking about. Yeah, yes, maybe the township would be the appropriate place to, to address such a letter.
And I know that they would give it to the township as well, so I will draft a letter. Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment at this time? Okay, and we'll move on to approving the minutes from the meeting of March 6, 2025. Second, motion of second. Any question, comments regarding those minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Those minutes are approved. Also, at, at this time, entertain a motion to amend our agenda slightly for requests from our reporter deeds.
Second.
Second.
Motion of second. Questions, comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, so we'll do that. Would you like to do that right now? Or wait till Sally's finished? This is new one. Where is yours?
We have receipts on the 18th and 19th of March of $1,081,023.09 and just a total of cash of $8,464,366.76. Our expenditures this week were $1,685,223.02. Our tax claim is $59,024.31. So that leaves us with $6,720,119.43.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Second.
Second. Questions, comments? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Thank you. Last, I want to introduce yourself for the record and you may proceed.
Okay. Dawn Brown, Recorder of Deeds. The voluntary leadership, opening up the courthouse, requesting to open the courthouse for March 22nd. I decided that I would also like to participate in the courthouse being opened that day for residents in our county and open our veterans ID program for veterans to come in to record their DB214s. And then we will give them Lebanon County Veteran ID for doing so. And also for our property or record alert program for property owners. We have many property owners that come into the courthouse asking us to help because you need the UPI, your tax personal number, to sign up for the program. So I just thought it was a great opportunity to be able to add that on for residents to be able to come in and do on a Saturday.
We're here on behalf of the Orphans Court as well.
Um, I believe Brian is going to be here also to do the marriage certificates.
I'll make a motion to approve use of courthouse for Saturday.
Sorry, I, in my case, I did not require my staff to be here. I asked for one or two volunteers to come in and they will receive comp time to do that.
Second. Motion of second. Questions, comments?
My question, it, does your motion include the, the Court for the Orphans Court? Or the, I'm sorry, the registered wills or?
That was sort of my intention to try to bring all that are going to be here into this.
I think he's doing the certified marriage certificate?
Yeah, we understand that, but we don't have a request. I was wondering if he had designated or asked you to pitch for him, so.
Been asking to pitch, sorry.
You know, we can't just have departments opening up without some kind of structure.
It's been done in a public meeting.
Process, yeah, so.
So be restricted to.
Your motion does not include that then?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct. But I just want to take a note of, of commend Hunter Smith too for coming up with this idea, be sensitive to the needs of our community and on, for you taking initiative as well to open your office to make it more convenient for the people we serve. So thank you. Appreciate that. Something you don't have to do.
We appreciate the sheriff also opening.
Thank you.
You.
Oh, we didn't take that action yet, but all, all, any other comments or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye. Close, same sign. You have that, we'll approve. Thank you. Where is yours?
Good morning, Director of Human Resources, Michelle Nably. Personnel transactions, resignations and terminations. Tina Zellman, Social Services Aid One slash Case Aid Children and Youth Removal No Call No Show Effective March 10. Neritza Ramos Lopez, Full-Time MATP Officer and Community Action Partnerships Resignation Effective February 28. Ritzabel Perez, Full-Time MATP Officer and Community Action Partnerships Resignation Effective March 14. Susan Kotschbar, Jury Attendant Courts Deceased Effective March 9. Cindy Weidman, Second Deputy Reporter of Deeds Retirement Effective June 3. Timmy Gray Jr., Full-Time Deputy Sheriff in the Sheriff's Office Resignation Effective March 28. And Amy Ross, Office Support Two Voter Registration Resignation Effective March 24.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as presented.
Second motion. Motion of second. We'll note, thank Cindy Weidman for 20 plus years of service to the county. Any questions, comments regarding those recommendations? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Moving on to changes of status, transfers and promotions. I have a motion to approve Area Agency on Aging Administrator Adrian Lazar's recommendation to reclassify the current part-time aging case aid two position to a full-time aging case aid two at 37.5 hours per week with benefits remaining in a grade 10 on the non-union salary chart. This is a funded position effective March 30, 2025.
Make the motion for that.
Second.
Motion of second. Questions, comments? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Lisa Rakarich, Promotion from Administrative Assistant London Area Agency on Aging to Fiscal Assistant Area Agency on Aging at rate of $1,433.70 by weekly effective March 31. Dale Simpson, Change of Status from Office Support One at the Jail to Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail at rate of $22.71 per hour effective March 31.
Second.
Second. Motion of second. Questions or comments? None? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
On to other transactions. Children and youth would like to hire the following three caseworker ones, all at the rate of $1,597.60 by weekly, all effective March 24. And that is Stephanie Ferreira, Janice Rodriguez and Vincent Di Medici. Children and youth would like to hire Amber Miller as a casework supervisor one at the rate of $2,270.46 by weekly effective March 24. The Lebanon County Correctional Facility would like to hire the following nine full-time correctional officers, all at the rate of $22.71 per hour, all effective March 24. And that is Christopher Miller, Christopher Warner, John Ritz, Kyle Kramer, Stuart Amerman, Stephen Burns, Victor Martinez, Trishell Irwin and Lindsay Coops, who is a rehire. President Judge Tewa would like to hire Carmen Malbonato as DJ Office Support One at the rate of $1,001.98 by weekly effective March 24. And that is for MDJ Figaro's office. President Judge Tewa would like to hire Ryan Howard as a juvenile probation officer one at the rate of $1,897.29 by weekly effective March 24.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Second. Questions or comments? Fair, please say aye. Close, same sign.
And I just, I just wanted to verify. So that's nine new correctional officers?
Uh, 10 with the change of status.
Oh, okay.
Good news.
Moving on to Salary Board, motion to approve all the transactions previously read plus the following. Pasanique Cruz, Add Interactor Pay at the rate of $1,500 annually prorated from the effective date, which that should be May or April 1, 2025.
Awesome.
Second.
Motion of second. Questions or comments? Sally, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Thank you. Anything else, Michelle?
No.
Thank you.
Dawn?
Yes.
Hey, that's a familiar face. It should be no introduction. However, for the record, please serve.
Good morning. Hi, John Shot, Office of Probation Services and Criminal Justice Advisory Board. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Hello. I'm here to ask your authorization to submit a modification to our current intermediate punishment grant for fiscal year 2024, 2025. Now, before I forget to do that, I do have a housekeeping item because this modif, this grammar modifying was approved before the new signatory rules took effect. Commission on Crime and Delinquency has it for me that I need to follow the old signature rules. So therefore I came with signature pages. Hopefully, this is the last time we have to see these, but I've been told that we have to get those signed. We always have two copies. So I appreciate that. Just small item, but I want to walk out here before I'm getting to give them. So I appreciate everything. Well, as I said, we heard a request, a modification to the intermediate punishment grant. After reviewing our budget, we realized that we could reduce expenditures by $8,216. Now, the budget as approved is $207,990. But around this time, the Commission on Crime and Delinquency does ask counties to review their budgets and see whether they're going to need more money or less funds to complete their objectives between now and the end of the fiscal year, at the end of June. Again, we did review the budget. We realized we do have some savings. The bulk of that savings, over $7,000, is the cost associated with the placement of a facility dog in probation services. On our best-case scenario, we thought that might happen by this spring. But Sasquatch has service dogs, has a very extensive review and application process, understandably so. And we realize that that process will not be completed between now and the end of the fiscal year. So those funds will not be expended. We do plan to continue with the application, hopefully have that facility dog in place sometime in the next fiscal year. We don't know, you know, when for sure. But it's safe to say that will not recur. And so that is funds that we will be able to give to PCC. They will not spend and give them an opportunity to, you know, allocate those funds to other counties that might be in the opposite situation. They may need more funds for certain. in the opposite situation. They may need more funds for certain projects that they're working on. The other savings, eleven hundred dollars really involves a reduction in the travel expenses. We did not spend the amount of money that we thought we would for last October's Treatment Court Professionals Conference. And we have no other conferences or conventions really on the schedule, so that's eleven hundred dollars that we can also reduce to the IP budget for this year. And I'm sure we'll get the funding announcement soon for next year's intermediate punishment budget. That has not been released yet by the commission. But I'm sure that's going to happen very shortly, and so probably be back maybe next month to ask your approval for the new fiscal year's budget. Details forthcoming.
Motion to modify the twenty four, twenty five IP grant as presented.
Second motion. I do have a question.
Motion to second.
Okay, I just wondered, the dog, have you met the dog?
I have not, no.
Okay, I just wondered if they had, could have a name, if it was a boy or girl.
Yeah, I don't know any word. To be honest, I haven't been directly involved in that whole process, and I couldn't really even tell you, you know, if that's the case. I don't think so. But I don't know that for sure. I don't commission.
I was just curious.
Any additional questions or comments? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have that approved.
Sorry, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Like to introduce yourself and for the record, please.
Good morning. My name's Jack DeChico. I am the founder and chief executive of Ventura Real Estate. Let me recall, I was here in September of two thousand twenty two when I proposed and was granted a LERTA for the conversion of a blighted and polluted industrial building into luxury apartments in the borough of Palmyra. I'm grateful to have the county's support, so thank you. As provided for in section seven of resolution nine dash one dash twenty twenty two, I'm here seeking a three-year extension of time to file an application for exemption to September first of two thousand twenty eight. Why am I seeking an extension? I thought it might be helpful to give you a summary of kind of what's transpired since we last met. So elevated construction costs and interest rates since we last met have put most new construction projects on hold. The other key item that's transpired is the school board in Palmyra refuses to provide any form of assistance for this project. On numerous occasions, we tried engaging with the school board in the spirit of reaching a mutually beneficial agreement. Separately, on an unsolicited basis, a highly regarded and respected member of the community submitted a proposal to the school board that effectively eliminated the financial risk for the school board. The school board refused to put it on their agenda for consideration and a vote. So in summary, nothing has really changed with the school board since we last met. Two other things have not changed since we last met. First is our commitment to explore every option possible to bring our vision to reality. Second is the support of the borough as evidenced by the zoning hearing boards, two-year extension of our zoning approvals, the maximum period permitted. We continue to believe that this is a great project for the local community and the broader county, as does the borough of Palmyra. The unsung heroes and supporters of this project include Roger Powell, the Borough Manager, the mayor, Thomas Miller, Borough Council members, including Anthony Catalani, and the members of the zoning hearing board, including Chairman Ryan Kelly and Jessica Creeter and Scott Bidding. In the absence of the school's support, we're exploring other ways to bring this project to fruition, including, among other things, exploring joint ventures and other forms of strategic partnerships with larger regional developers. We've recently had preliminary discussions with a number of prospects and the county's LERTA. The extension itself is top of mind in light of the current shelf life, if you will, of September twenty twenty five. So what has changed since we last met is that our overall plans for the site now reflect a total of one hundred and forty five apartments instead of just ninety two, which we envisioned constructing over three separate phases. Phase one is a ninety-two unit, three-story luxury apartment building. Phase two is a forty-five unit, three-story market rate or fifty-five plus community apartment building, and then phase three would be an eight-unit, two-story apartment building. So spreading the general and administrative costs over a larger number of units improves the economics. This project will result in a substantial increase in tax revenues for the county. Using the latest figures from the county assessment office, we estimate the tax revenues from this property to go from roughly seven hundred dollars a year annually to forty nine thousand annually at the end of all three phases of construction. That's a substantial increase. This concludes my prepared remarks, and I'm happy to address any questions or comments you may have at this time.
If I could before this, not really a question. Could you, you referred to the property early on. You went into a detail the last time you were here, but you referred to it just as blighted. Can you just go into a little bit of what, what the property you purchased? When you purchased, you know, the condition you purchased it in, the condition now, sort of what are you proposing to go from this to, to what you described?
Sure. So when we purchased the property in twenty twenty, I believe it was, we we purchased it at a sheriff's sale, not knowing what was inside. We, we had an, we had an idea that it was pretty bad. You were purchasing the property sight unseen. And an indication of how bad things were is the bank that owned, sorry, the bank that had a million dollar first mortgage on the property refused to pay the real estate taxes in order to take possession of it. So that kind of gives you a sense of how bad things were. When we took possession of it, we discovered that there were among many things inside the building, toxic chemicals, which required a a very strategic and coordinated cleanup effort. And so we did all of that, and, and all of that was taken care of actually before we came to the county seeking the LERTA. So most of the, most of the cleanup was done by that point. Since we last met, the, the entire building has been cleaned out and is currently sitting ready for demolition. We're proposing to demolish the entire building, and where it stains now will sit a three-story ninety-two unit luxury apartment building, complete with amenities that I would consider to be suitable to the term luxury. And an example would be a gym, private offices and co-working space, a lounge, a shared kitchen, onsite leasing staff, et cetera. This project, the ninety-two unit luxury apartment building, will also have a hundred and twenty seven parking spaces at the, at the very least. And phase two and phase three will not occur until phase one is, is up and running. We have a certificate of occupancy, et cetera. Did I, did I cover?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure. I know you've covered that the last time. Just wanted it to be sort of reiterated what, what you started with and what you're trying to, you know, go from point A to point B. Thank you.
First of all, I do appreciate you staying with this project. That has been a dormant terrible situation there in that borough for a long time, and I weigh heavily the support that the borough has continued with. So that, that means a lot. You know, they're the local first folks on the front line with that, and they've given me the support. The other thing that I wanted to mention since you were here last, we have supported a housing study for the whole county and which shows a deficit of about six thousand across all types, apartments, all levels of homeownership. We, we have shortages in every, pretty much every aspect, and I know there are a lot, a lot of building, even luxury apartments going up on Evergreen right now. So I'm glad that you've expanded to include the middle range and so on, and the fifty-five over perhaps. I think that's all good to help address some of this shortage, so thank you. Thank you.
I have a problem with your proposal. Number one, you expired your time. I do commend you for cleaning up the pollution, but that also makes it a very sellable property. In addition to that, parking is still an issue. You told us that you are now going to build a hundred and forty-five units, and you're going to provide a hundred and twenty seven parking spaces. Most families have two cars. I, I don't see this as a viable project for community in Palmyra, and I think you're going to cause a lot of problems with that proposal, so I, I'm sorry.
May I comment?
Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to hear your concerns. First, I would say that if I recall correctly, the last time we met, you were concerned about the saleability of the property and the LERTA adding value, and I was hoping that by this time, with thirty months passing since we last met, that the saleability concern may have been alleviated to some extent, because it's fair to say that I've had multiple opportunities to walk away with a very nice size check, and I haven't done so. So I was hoping that time would be all that was needed to substantiate my commitment to this project. The other thing I would like to comment on is you have a very valid point about the parking. One hundred forty-five units is phases one, two, and three. One hundred twenty seven parking spaces is for just the ninety-two unit luxury apartment building, which has not been taken lightly. We've conducted, when I say we, experts that we contract that study parking and the adequacy of parking. We've ensured that the proposed parking will be more than suitable, because if it does not work, if the parking scenario does not work for the residents, guess who loses the most? The owners do, because you have unhappy tenants. So we believe we've addressed the parking situation as well, and it's been deeply and extensively considered by the zoning hearing board. It was actually their key concern. So you, you're, you're spot on as it being a key concern. It was their primary concern, and they're convinced that what we're proposing is suitable.
Now, to boil it down, your request again is for three-year extension of your existing LERTA.
Correct, as, as provided for within the LERTA itself.
It will be from September, originally was September first of two thousand twenty two. He's here early, obviously. It hasn't, that, that time hasn't passed yet, so it would extend it from September first of twenty five to September first of two thousand twenty eight.
Well, I, I look at the farmers, and I don't know that they're all farmers, but all the people here, and they have to pay their full tax. They didn't get ten years to do what you had to do, and it's done. I don't think you did, respectfully, don't think you deserve another extension. I, I really find problems with giving you a break again.
Sir, I, just for my own education, I think I was here three years ago or whatever it was, you were here pitching the first time. What is the total acreage of this entire plot that you have? I know you're going to build it up in phases if it moves forward.
Don't vote me. I'm going from memory here, but I think it's roughly three and a half acres, all projects.
Okay, so in, okay, so that's obviously enough land to put these three separate things on?
Oh, yeah. The zoning hearing board is there for that purpose. They determine whether it's suitable.
And I know you're not getting a lot of support from the Palmyra School Board, uh, School District. Would this project move forward if you do get the LERTA extension from the county and the, and Palmyra Borough, which I'm assuming is supportive of your efforts, will you just forego trying to get the approval of the school board?
We are exploring opportunities to do this despite the school's support. So yes, we're, we're looking for ways to do it with other support, because it's pretty obvious that it's not going to happen.
All right, thank you.
Well, I would like to move further questions that we support this extension and appreciate your standing with it and bringing this for the borough.
Motion to extend the timeline for this application to September one, twenty twenty eight. A second?
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Any additional questions or comments this time? There are none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, you have that support for three more years, sir, and good luck, and I, I want to commend you again. It's the, the places in Isor. The former use of that building was, it was a factory building?
So they made printing press equipment? That was the former use before that. I believe originally it was a shoe factory.
And Isor environmental risk to the community have already demonstrated a commitment to cleaning up, so I, I commend you.
Well, I thank you for your continued support. It means a lot.
Hey, Mr. Kerwin's next.
Give one of these to each of you, please.
Oh, thank you.
Go, Alan. I gave one.
Have a seat. Please introduce yourself for the record, and then you may proceed.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Patrick Kerwin. I'm the executive director of the Lebanon Valley Expo Center. And I would like to begin today by thanking you for your extraordinary support provided to the Expo Center over the years, not only in terms of the county's financial support, but your personal involvement with the fair and numerous other events at the Expo Center. It's recognized and greatly appreciated. I'm here today not to request additional financial support, but to request that the Lebanon County serve as a pass-through organization for the four million dollar grant the Expo has received from the Commonwealth to help fund a new exposition hall at the Expo Center. The Expo Center is receiving this grant through the Commonwealth's Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program. This program is intended to spur or promote economic activity. Senator Gettard, working with the governor's office, secured this grant for the Expo Center. I have attached the letter from Governor Shapiro authorizing this grant. Per the statute authorizing these grants, these funds must pass through certain types of organizations, such as local governments or authorities. This is to make certain that the funds are spent for the approved purpose. And you could reference that on paragraph four in the governor's letter, which is attached. There will be no cost to the county to serve as a pass-through organization. If the county should incur any legal or filing fees associated with this process, the Expo Center will reimburse the county for those costs or any other costs for serving in this capacity. The Expo Center will not receive these funds until the project is completed and satisfactorily inspected by the Commonwealth. I'd be pleased to try to answer any questions at this point. A pass-through organization is an eligible grantee entity, which would need to be a local government or authority, and I think the reason that they do that is to make sure that the funds are spent the way they're supposed to be spent. Yes, there's been trouble in the past where they got the money and didn't complete what they were supposed to be completing.
Just add some, one other thing to that. You will have, the paperwork will be prepared.
Yes.
So you'll have your accounting firm, you know, cross all the Ts, et cetera, the county can then review that and submit it. So it's preparation of those required forms and reports and so on. There's a lot to demonstrate prevailing wage and source of materials and all their. source of materials and all sorts of things with the project. So that'll be prepared for the county to review and that submit.
That's correct.
What all, are you, what all are you gonna do with the, is it four million dollars?
Four million dollars. That will go towards the new exposition hall that's being planned at the Expo Center.
Where will that come?
That's, at this point, if you're familiar with the North Hall, the large North Hall, then there's a parking lot, well, not a parking lot, but behind it, there's a parking area. Go on the other side of that. So that would become almost like a courtyard, that existing area where you've been load and unload into either building from that area.
Is it gonna be like a pole barn or is it?
No, it would be very similar to North Hall. It would be a large exposition hall. The size is to be determined. They're working on it at the moment depending on the funding.
This would enable you to host even larger events.
Yes, we have many customers now who are looking for more space, and we've been very fortunate. We've been very, very busy. Again, I thank you. This, my opinion is a wonderful asset for Lebanon County, this facility.
Well, when you did the presentation earlier for the ARPA request, and we, we agreed to support that as well. So I think very much in favor of being a conduit for this project. But thank you.
I don't have a problem with the project. I just wanted to know what the money was going for. So thank you.
And as we get a little firmer in what it's going to be, we'll come back and share that with the commissioners.
Thank you. Make a motion to go ahead and approve the request from Mr. Curwin.
I'll second the motion.
Second, any questions or comments? Are you none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you again.
Our support. Hey, Mr. Bug, Red Cross. Please introduce yourselves for the record, and then you may proceed.
Good morning. Jason Bug, representing the Central PA Chapter of the Red Cross.
And Jill Feaver, also representing the Red Cross Central Pennsylvania Chapter.
We appreciate you taking some time this morning to join us in honoring March as Red Cross Month. I'll keep my remarks brief. We offer several programs for the community, including free smoke detectors and preparedness education for elementary school students. People can find more information about those programs on our website, redcross.org. And I have also just mentioned that we are always looking for additional volunteers as well as sites to host blood drives.
We just want to thank you as commissioners and your entire community for supporting the Red Cross. We are here in times of need in the entire county. So thank you to you as commissioners, your first responders, and the agencies within this county for supporting us so we can support.
Likewise, we thank you. The Red Cross has always made an impact in Lebanon County and continues to do so. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
So we have a proclamation that we are opposed, or I would like to make a motion to approve that proclamation.
Do that. Did you just?
No, no.
I'll move to approve this proclamation as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. While I read that for the record. This March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in Lebanon County and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than one hundred and forty years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Advancing this noble mission, the volunteers, blood and platelet donors and supporters who give back through the American Red Cross Central Pennsylvania Chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering. So the proclamation goes on. I will read the rest, but we'd like to present this to you and, and thank you again for your commitment.
Thank you. Could we have a photo with you commissioners?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is there anything to that, Jamie?
I left my phone in the car. It would have been locked in the bag anyway.
Thanks so much. That's nice flag.
I like her.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
So much.
Thank you. You too.
Hey, Amy, you're next. Please introduce yourself to the record, and you may proceed.
Good morning. Good to see you again. I am Amy Bradford, Client Relationship Manager for Penn State Extension, serving six counties in this area, including Lebanon County. It's my pleasure to be with you again this morning, wearing the green and white of, of 4H and celebrating just one area that Penn State Extension utilizes to serve communities and youth and adults throughout the state, including here in Lebanon County. This is 4H Week, Pennsylvania 4H Week. It started Saturday, and we'll go through Sat, or started Sunday, and we'll go to Saturday. And amongst that, we just wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to sit in front of you and share with you from the words and from the members and leaders themselves, what Extension does and what 4H does here in the community. So thank you for your support. Thank you for your support of Extension and the five units, especially all that you do so that we have the youth development that we're able to achieve through 4H here in the county. So I'm gonna turn it over. We have with us today Martha Gregory and Debbie Tice, two of the Extension educators and 4H educators. And then they will introduce the members so that they can share with you on their experience with 4H.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna speak from here. I'm Martha Gregory. I'm the 4H educator here in the county. And we have a number of representatives from the organization, both youth volunteers, youth representatives and adult volunteer leaders. They have patiently enjoyed the program this morning, listening to your meeting and having a civics lesson while they're participating. So I think I will turn it over to them to introduce themselves and share just briefly about their 4H experience. Stella?
Hello, I'm Stella Kleinon. I'm a part of the 4H Friends Club, and I have been for we've almost nine years now, where I've had so many opportunities to grow my own leadership skills. And I'm very interested in sewing and fashion, and I've also been able to grow those skills as well. There have been a lot of programs that I've been able to be a part of, such as annual regional and state fashion review, where I've been able to be judged on and model the clothing that I've made. And that's just been a really great opportunity for me. And then the past two years, I've also gone to this 4H State Leadership Conference at the Penn State Hotel in State College. And it's just a weekend, and I was able to take, I believe, six workshops to expand my own leadership skills, and I think great achievement too, right? And expand my confidence, make new connections, meet new people. And it was just a really great opportunity, and 4H offers a lot of those amazing opportunities to you. And I would just really like to thank them for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Clayton Sanders. I'm the current treasurer for my 4H Friends Club. I participated in woodworking this year as a part of my club. I did a bicycling class. Being on the opposite team is a great experience for me teaching. Currently, I'm planning the budget for my club right now. I'm worrying about writing checks and balancing a checkbook which I'll use for the rest of my life. I wanted Stella to the State Leadership Conference this year. I took a lot of classes, including learning about public speaking, which is something.
So my name, my name is Clayton Heisey, and I'm a part of the livestock club that 4H has. I am the treasurer of the scene, I'm the treasurer of the whole livestock club. But more importantly, through showing livestock, it's really a thing to my family as we raise show goats on our personal operation. But my coach here, Dan Seaman, I'm involved in 4H livestock judging, which allows me the opportunity to go and do public speaking on, advance my skills in public speaking and decision-making as a judge of livestock, and it has presented me with numerous opportunities to travel across the country. This past year, we won our state contest up there in Penn State, that State College in June. And then that presented us with the opportunity to go to Denver, Colorado, to the National Western Stock Show, so that we could compete in the livestock judging competition there, where we play seventh overall team. My teammates are not with me here today. But that was certainly a great opportunity for us to network with others from across the country, especially other teams from other 4H organizations from across the country. And I look forward to continuing this as I, throughout the next coming years, to hopefully advance further again in the state contest that comes up in this June, to possibly go to the national contest that is hosted in Louisville, Kentucky, in the North American International Livestock Expo. But it's certainly just been a great opportunity that 4H has provided me with to develop in personal leadership skills. And being able to serve as treasurer in the livestock club has also been a great opportunity as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
We couldn't program without adult volunteers, so we have two representatives today to speak of the part of adult volunteers.
I think you know.
I'm Dan Seaman. I'm here today as a 4H volunteer, and it's with the livestock club. I think I've been there twenty-five years, I think now. And have done a various amount of different projects and different things in our group. The, the latest, which is livestock judging, as Clayton said. And I just feel that livestock judging just brings out so much in the kids who are able to do that. They formulate opinions, and then they deliver why they gave those, why they have those opinions. And it puts them so far ahead of some other, some other kids and students as they move on in life. And even in, as, as you get to positions like this, everybody sitting in this room, you're able to get up and speak in front of people and then be able to, like I said, tell why you did what you did. So gave that opinion. So, but it's a great organization. We have, what, about a hundred and twenty kids or so in our club? We may be the largest in the state, I'm not sure, but we're very proud of our club. We do a whole lot of other activities, Fork Bowl being one of them, which we had a team that actually won the contest this year. So kudos to them. And we have a lot of great leaders, but most of all, we have a great group of kids. And even though these two aren't in our club, they're a good representative of what 4H is all about. So thanks for your support.
One more. Linda.
My name's Linda Siegel. I'm the organizational leader of the 4H Friends Club, so I claim me some. Club has ninety-five members, age five to eighteen, and then we have thirty-five volunteers. And the reason we have so many volunteers is that we include parents who are willing to be at the meeting to support. They may not be teaching the project, but they're helping out by being there. A community, our club is a community club. We do not do ag production projects. We do learn by doing activities, projects in cooking, selling, leadership, public speaking, community service, computer programming, and we have about twenty-five different projects. I'd like to, these kids are learning by doing every day in 4H. But I'd like to thank the county commissioners for your continued support of the county 4H program by providing the office space, the staffing, because your efforts are multiplied by all of us volunteers. There are only a few county staff members, and we're reaching all these kids with, I think, very important learn by doing activities. So thank you.
And I said one word, but one more to have. Everett came along today, and he's been so patient. So step one up here, Everett, and just introduce yourself and how old you are.
My name's Everett. I'm in third grade in my ninth year, and I like to be bicycle, bicycling. It's fun experience.
And brother to Gray. Thanks for coming, everyone. And we did like a photo too.
Yeah, she did a presentation the last two years at the county contest. So these. Moving on up.
First of all, thank you all for, we mentioned the civics lesson, which you were able to endure, and that's a testament to your, you know, abilities right there. But for you all to be able to do what you're doing on behalf of our county and the future of our county, it's very inspiring to have you here and see how our investment in, in all these things actually, you know, has a wonderful outcome. And it's consistent over time that this is such a strong 4H company, you know, and commitment to agriculture and so on. It's just, it's great for all of us to have you here firsthand, and appreciate the taken time out to give us your visit. Thank you.
Can we, this photo is my most accessible in our photos.
Well, let me read this proclamation we've added on, on the record here is, whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly six million youth across the country, and whereas 4H has helped four hundred and twenty-one Lebanon County youth participating in eleven clubs to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders as they learn by doing. And whereas 4H in Pennsylvania is delivered by Penn State Extension in rural areas, small towns and cities in all sixty-seven counties in the Commonwealth to more than seventy-seven thousand youth ages five to eighteen. And whereas 4H in Lebanon County provides curriculum, meaning PA academic standards, teachers, and after-school programs and community partners to provide hands-on and interactive learning to three thousand four hundred and thirty-five youths. Whereas 4H youth in Pennsylvania are served by a network of educators, staff members, and more than six thousand adult volunteers who engage and mentor youth in learning activities and hands-on projects in topics such as animal science, civic engagement, STEM, and health and wellness. Whereas ninety-two volunteers in Lebanon County are part of 4H's network, providing youth with opportunities for leadership development, career exploration, problem-solving, friendships, community involvement, passion, and purpose. Whereas Pennsylvania 4H showcases the incredible ways that 4H inspires kids to achieve and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Lebanon County who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. Now, with a motion and a second, and we'll get this on the floor, but we, the county commissioners, Lebanon County, do hereby proclaim March sixteenth, twenty-second as Pennsylvania 4H Week throughout Lebanon County, and encourage our citizens to acknowledge and celebrate 4H for its valuable service and continued efforts to empower youth with a foundation of success for a lifetime. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Motion and a second. I'll just say again, always enjoy being at 4H events, especially to hear these young people because it gives me hope in the future. So many negative things we hear about in our world today, but you're doing something very positive. So thank you.
Those positive things are also in the form of projects that we get to see. And when they model the clothes and, you know, carry in the chests and everything, it's just amazing to see how well-prepared they are and, and sharing their project with everyone.
Glad to meet you.
Debbie's here as our program assistant as well. I think Amy did mention that as an assistant. And our other educator is attending a family reunion today.
Motion second. Do we have, oh, for a question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have, any other comments?
No, I just would reiterate what everyone else said. We couldn't do it without all our volunteers. So we are very happy for volunteers and the kids that come to our.
Very pleased to recognize your work.
Yeah. Yeah.
Dan.
We're gonna go out here.
No, we're gonna go out here. I am now.
It's not to say again.
I'm just glad it's not serious.
It's not something I have.
So, and that's all applied, but I have, I can, I can pull it out. So, when I create a website, I assign all the assessments. I wonder, oh, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, yeah, I figure it out.
No.
No.
Well, actually, because the, the rest of the agenda.
Well, actually, because the, the rest of the agenda.
It's not, so I gotta like figure it out.
Invite Mr. Nathan Drasher to the table, please.
And then scout minister.
Nathan, would you like to introduce yourself? And you brought someone with you. He looks familiar to me, but.
Hello, my name is Nathan Drasher. I'm in Eagle Scout in Troop 203. This is my dad.
He doesn't look like you.
So, you want to tell us about, a little bit about your Eagle Scout experience, your project?
I built shelving for the nonprofit Center for Champions in South Allison Hill. We also revamped the room, so we took it out, we cleaned it, we painted, we put it to life, and we provided some business as well for the area. It's been, it's been a long journey, four months.
So, how long you been scouting then? When did you get started?
So, I joined my Cub Scouts, Liza, we blow this one, which is, I think, fifth grade.
Fourth grade?
Sounds, sounds right. It's been a while, I forget. And from there on, I've just been kind of ill enough. There's a bit of a short period where I wasn't being much around middle school, but once I hit high school, I really got back into it, and I think it's really been worth it.
I think it's really worth it as well, too. So, I, we have a proclamation here to recognize Nathan's achievements. Would someone like to make a motion to get that on the floor?
Second.
Second. I will read the proclamation. Whereas Nathan Drasher, a scout in Troop 203 of the Boy Scouts of America, achieved the rank of Eagle Scout on January 21, 2025, and whereas Nathan has served as Assistant Senior Patrol Leader, Senior Patrol Leader, Instructor, Leader in the Order of the Arrow Brotherhood, and having conquered the grueling two-week high adventure program at Philmont Scout Reservation, and whereas for his Eagle Scout project, he and a group of volunteers gutted and completely rebuilt a support room for the Center for Champions Children's Charity. And now therefore, we, the commissioners of Lebanon County, take this opportunity to recognize Nathan for the steady, persistent progress to achieve the highest rank in Eagle Scout. Further, we extend our congratulations and best wishes to Nathan for his leadership and dedication. Any questions or comments regarding the motion?
I just wondered your project, can you tell me a little more about it?
All right, so we came in, we were connected through Center for Champions with my church, with a guy who's in charge there for Champions goes there. We came in, we looked around, we located the storage area as an area that needs to do this work.
If, if, if given the choice, they would have had us renovate an entire block. The whole block needs work, and we had to narrow it down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we came in, we had our first workday, we removed the clutter from the storage area, we took out some big previous, I guess closet might be the right word, but. And then we started cleaning up, we painted that day, and then the second workday, we came in again after the paint was dried. We tried to sort, as well as we also tried to sort some stuff on the first day, but the boys weren't really able to do that. So, second, so the second workday, we just came in and started setting up the shelving, we cut up, cut up wood, we threw in, we actually re, re-used pallets, so the tops, or the tops of the shelving, and we did some of that. We also put in the wood, so the frame, we bring the shelves, and they're strong enough to hold, literally engine blocks. We got some very generous donations for the brackets.
I can, I, I have worked with Eagle Scouts for many years, Jamie, and one consistent thing on all projects you see is, I'll speak for, the ones I've seen, has been that the, the project scope will scope out 1,000, 2,003, whatever cost they need to run, and when you look at the, the log of money and donations that are made, it's, you know, $10, $5 fundraiser, $100, and then parent check, $800. I just want to say Nathan raised, we didn't spend a dime, he raised every single cent, 100% himself, and he raised twice as much as what was required for the project, and then made a cash donation to the charity when he stopped. We're very proud.
I kind of had to, they paid a lot for that two-week backpacking trip.
I just want to say that anything that I've ever read or have communicated about Eagle Scouts and, and the predecessor group, the group that just left the 4H, that the, the chances of success in life are right near 100%. So, this, all this investment in your community and in your time and, and your growth, it looks well appreciated, but it's also, it'll have good outcomes for you as you get older.
So, motion and second on, for additional comments or questions at this lap?
How much did you raise?
I just spent 2K.
And so the, the materials and everything cost what?
For the 10th, it's, I got most of the donated, I know the brackets were.
Raised all the money, and then on top of that, he managed to get most of the materials donated on top of all the money he raised, so that's why he was able to make the big donation.
I think I saved around just those brackets alone.
Yeah.
So, how much did you donate to the charity?
I think we donated around, I think we made it a hat, we spent about 1K, we raised an extra, so about, yes, another $1,000.
And Boy Scouts, you know, typically are role models, certainly to other, to the younger boys in the troops and, and just in the community. What would you tell boys that, about the Boy Scouts and about joining and, and dedicating the time to be a Boy Scout?
I would say that no matter what, you should, I wish Child Scouts, I know, you mentioned these organizations do so much for our community and your personal success. I'd say that any boy who wants to do it should try it and then stick through it. And I also recommend that any parent who has their kid should keep them in it, because sometimes it can be a bit of struggle.
Well worth it.
Much so.
Additional questions or comments?
So, you've got about 25 badges there, maybe I can't see what part of the badge, but.
Yes, I'm really good. Yep.
What was your favorite or most interesting out of all of them?
That's a hard choice. Each one has a story behind it, but I'd say probably backpacking, because of the two weeks in New Mexico, we went down, we keep mentioning Philmont a lot, that is probably the highest level of camp that scout can do. And I went down there with my crew and I could talk about it for hours.
Yeah. He, he trained for nine months, walking around Palmyra with a full backpack full of weights, 50, 60 pounds plus, just walking around town, doing stair runs at the high school or middle school.
Very good.
Okay, any questions? If not, all in favor of the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, let's have it, and again, congratulations to Nathan. To present this.
Thank you so much. Got you. Take a photo? Yes, please.
Congratulations, thank you. Good job. How heavy were those weights?
Here you go. Okay, okay. Do it like Dave.
You can do it right here. Right here is good.
And you're not as big as that other person. You want to get in?
I can't.
Somebody else up there.
Oh, Joyce, she's got.
I remember last night, oh, certainly 5:45, something like that. You want to meet up? Okay.
Was sitting that long and hard for you?
No, of course. Well, if you were carrying weight, wrapping your hand.
Hey, Mrs. Chaney, would you like to introduce yourself for the record and proceed?
I apologize in upfront. I might, Michelle be my mouthpiece for a minute. My name's Julie Chaney with the Lebanon County Planning Department. I have with me Michelle Bremer with Gannett Planning. She is going to be acting as project manager for the update to the Lebanon County Comprehensive Plan, and we are here today to formalize the contract with that plan. Just as a reminder, this plan is being funded in part by a grant that we received from D C, D C E D through the Municipal Assistance Program. They will be funding half of that, half of this project at 8,850. The remainder of those funds are coming from the county through the general funds of 51,500 and in-kind services of $37,000 through our T I S program. So, with that, you have been given a copy of the scope of work, and Matt had a chance to review the contract. So, really, I open it up for any questions that you may have for us, and then maybe Michelle can lay out maybe like the first 90 days after the contract is signed, and where we are looking to go within the first three months of the project.
All received copies of the scope services proposal ahead of the meeting. Any questions or comments, or you'd like to make a motion to?
One general question, as far as participation of, for example, the township supervisors, does that, does that come around in terms of getting feedback and?
Well, no, that will be, that will be part of the process.
I don't, you know.
Yes. Yeah, I would think, you know, that we will probably, we're, we're not there yet, but as far as, we might have some, some representation on the technical committee from municipalities, but I think, you know, in the, in the larger sense through stakeholder interviews, certainly, you're getting input from all the municipalities, it would be a part of that process.
Motion. I provide a motion to adopt this plan.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions, comments? Done, all in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's have it. Proceed.
Very good, thank you very much. We'll get our administrative kickoff scheduled, and I anticipate that at our kickoff meeting, we'll be talking in detail about the, sort of the technical work, the data collection and analysis that our team will do to then bring, sort of what are the trends and issues? What is the data telling us is happening in Lebanon County? And then what is the stakeholder perception of that? Local government, county department heads, public at large, what do they see as concerning in terms of the future of the county? I mean, I was thinking about, what is the county role in county planning? Like, what do they care? Like, the local government has control over sort of the land use and some of that development stuff, but ultimately, all of that generates the demand for the kinds of services that the county is responsible for providing. So, having that outlook on how much more and where, and what's the composition going to look like, that's really why the county has a stake in sort of looking at not just any single municipality, but looking at all of that and trying to carry a conversation about where is our larger county community headed in the future?
Yeah, just the overarching thing is the quality of life for the county in its 10 years. So, yes, we do have, you know, vested interest in exactly so paid, you know, in guiding the process.
Yeah, and Michelle was involved in the last time we did it.
Yes.
Yeah, Fleming, and still Lebanon County resident?
Still.
So, she's also in the county.
Bested interests.
Yes, indeed.
The other question, Kelly.
Okay, well, keep your best. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, yep.
We didn't have to vote on anything for them.
Did we?
Did we both?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought, didn't realize we voted.
Yes, you did, you took action.
Thank you.
So, it's a pleasure. Good morning. Introduce yourself for the record and you may proceed.
I'm Adrian Lacer, the administrator to Office of Aging. Today, I am presenting a request to install four door access additions to our agency for security. This will end up including four door card proximity readers with one visual intercom set for the existing internal doors through the agency. The intercom set will be at the main receptionist area on the second floor. We currently have security cameras and one entrance for the public. The four doors that are included in the proposal are all for the administrative and care management offices. The nutrition office located on the first floor already has a card proximity reader to prevent the public from going to the nutrition office as the main reception area. In the future, we're hoping to end up having an administrative assistant at the front reading entrance area that can end up having people sign in and direct them as to where they need to go in the building, and then they'd be able to buzz them in through the second set of doors. The primary risk to be reduced is community access to our employees. Lebanon County Office of Aging provides protective services daily for people that are being abused, neglected, and exploited. The perpetrators are not always in agreement with a government agency being involved in the decision-making for a consumer and could retaliate against our staff and agency. At the quarterly meetings for the Department of Aging, it would strongly suggest and discuss that the area agencies on aging need to look at their emergency preparedness plans, which entail security of the buildings where agency employees conduct business. Lebanon County Area Agency on Aging needs to provide a safer environment with the current setup while continuing to maintain and inviting environment to our senior center participants. Proposal is from Reed Locksmith, which is a total cost of $11,520.74. There is no additional cost to the county. London County Area Agency on Aging is able to cover the cost and complete the project with funds from positions that were vacated for short-term periods.
Okay, entertain a motion to, to expenditure.
I'll make a motion to approve, but would you repeat the number, 11,500?
Twenty.
Five twenty.
Yes.
Twenty seventy-four, okay. Thought I had one number wrong.
Just, yeah, second, but I'd also like to add, it's a long time coming, that any enhancement is safe.
Entertain a motion to, um, to get expenditure.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve. Would you repeat the number, eleven thousand five hundred?
Twenty.
Five twenty.
Yes.
Twenty seventy-four, okay. Thought I had one number wrong.
Just only, yeah, second, but I'd also like to add, it's a long time coming, that any enhancement with the safety and security of the employees. I think is, is great. And what's your timeframe? Do you have one for the next step of having the administrative person to sort of likely have it, um, at the M H I D E I building?
Um, right now, we're, uh, reclassifying a position, um, for the one position that we would end up using down at the front door. So, um, from there though, that front door needs to be reconfigured. We need some type of area with a desk and a glass and a partition. And I'd say hopefully within the next year, because it all depends on, on that project being completed. Um, and then from there, I feel like we'd be fully set with the employees needed at our office.
Appreciate your focus on that.
Additional questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do you have our permission and support? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Hey, Mr. Walden.
Five items here for you, uh, the first two being additional proclamations, that the first one is for Pennsylvania eight-one-one Safe Digging Month, acknowledging or recognizing April twenty twenty-five as Pennsylvania eight-one-one Safe Digging Month, encouraging for contractors and uh, property owners to call before they dig. Uh, that is what Pennsylvania eight-one-one is intended for to, um, prevent damage or interruption to utilities.
I'll move to adopt this proclamation.
Second.
And second, questions or comments? Again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Second, uh, I have is to recognize March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month in Lebanon County. Designation is formalized and expands the federal designation that was, uh, that was originated thirty years ago in March of nineteen eighty-six as hemophilia awareness month, now bleeding disorders awareness month. And it recognizes and brings to light the great scientific achievements in the treatment of bleeding disorders for which there is no cure and the greater pursuit of advanced therapies to cure the disorder.
Make a motion to approve the request for a this bleeding disorder proclamation.
Second.
And a second, questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
All right, I have a hotel tax grant fund application from Making a Difference of Lebanon, P A. Uh, this application is for a Pullman Park five K. It's held obviously at Pullman Park. Um, they are requesting four hundred dollars of a total project cost of seventeen hundred dollars. And this would help to support their advertising, which they expect to bring in runners from all over the county, other counties and neighboring states. Last year, they had runners from six different counties and two other states. And they believe this will assist them continuing that.
I will move to approve this request.
I'll, um, second it, but I'd like to ask a question. Was there any indication of the number of people that participated in this event?
No, it's just, uh, it was that there were runners from, runners from six different counties and two other states.
But if you, I'm just facetious here, but if you had seven runners, then one could be for each. I just wanted to tell them. I didn't give that.
I don't have any idea.
All right, I'll find out on my own. That's fine.
Motion is second. Additional questions or comments? Are you none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That is approved.
Yeah, I have one, uh, disabled veteran, disabled veteran exemption uh, from real estate tax meeting, all the requirements of the program. This is for Sean Louis of Locust Street, Palmyra.
Make a motion to approve the disabled veteran exemption.
I'll second.
From real estate tax.
Second, any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, just have it.
And the final item I have is a link relinquishment notification to the Department of Community and Economic Development Office of the Budget. We had Pat in here a little earlier for a redevelopment assistance capital program grant for the expo. This was a, a rap piece for sure, a five hundred thousand dollar redevelopment assistance capital grant that was awarded back in twenty nineteen. Uh, it was intended for a medical office project, uh, I believe at the corner of Cornwall and Rockery Roads. Granted to Wellspan, uh, the county was going to be the pastor entity, but they have since decided that, uh, they're not moving forward or they re, realigned their capital projects, from what I understand, and they are relinquishing this grant. And that requires notification, um, to the Commonwealth.
May I ask? And that to me was that little barn out there?
Brown farm.
Has the animals and stuff at Christmas and are they going to sell it or are they going to use it for something else?
I really.
Immediate land that I'm aware of.
I really don't know.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Riley at Wellspan might be able to answer the questions. Those kind of questions, Bob Riley.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Anything else for the good of the order? Anyone? Not, well, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Entertainer, thank you all very much.